Hi, everybody. How are you? Can you hear me okay? Good. I see a new face. All right. I think we're waiting for one more at least. Have a quorum.
We have a quorum, but we can wait.
I guess you're right. I was thinking you're right. Thanks, Jeff. Correcting my math. I appreciate that. Is that Linda? How are you, Linda? Nice to, nice to hear you. How's it going?
I just wanted to let you know I was there.
Great. Yeah, thanks. I appreciate that very much. And we have our meeting so far. We have Rod and we have Melissa, and we have Jeff Goodrich, and we have Brian, and Jan is our guest. And Vince Crowe just joined us. Nancy Osgood is here. And Aaron Deena Moore, which I think we're going to hear more about, right? Is that right, Aaron? Okay, super great. Hi, Vince. Can you hear us? Super welcome, Nancy. Yeah, thanks all for coming. I hope you had a good summer. I know we had August off and now we're back and running, I guess we call it. The first item of business we're calling to order is to approve our agenda. If the thunder gets too loud, let me know, okay? My left ear here. Luckily, we're not outside under a tree or in the, in the field. Do we have a high irony? Nice to see you. I think we're all here now. Mark had a work conflict. He may join us later. Other than that, I think we're all here. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Don't move.
Thanks, Brian. We have a second. Thank you, Melissa. And any discussion before we take a vote? Go ahead, Jeff.
I'd like to add our recent open meeting law violations to the agenda.
Okay. Let's see, where would, do we want to? Maybe during our? Yeah, we'll do that maybe through number seven. Okay, we'll work on that. Okay, thank you, Jeff. We'll put that down there. It's a good ad. We all want to obey the open meeting law. I know sometimes we struggle. Okay, so we'll do that with under, under seven. With that amendment, is there any other difference or additions, subtraction? Yes, Vince?
I emailed earlier about adding just a little bit of time, just talk about any, anything about traffic. Sure. A few minutes about that, too. That'd be nice. Whether it's nothing, that's fine, too. I'd just like to know, just be informed for everybody to know what we can do.
Thanks, Vince. Yes, that will also be covered under number seven. That's a good one. Go ahead, Jeff Goodrich.
Yeah, I think I'd like to add what Vince said to a later agenda because it's a, it's a fairly substantial topic.
Yeah, let's talk about it under number seven, and then we'll see where we go from there. Okay, that's good. All right. So any other discussion? If not, we have two additions to item number seven. All in favor of the agenda, say, raise your hand. Great. Okay, it looks like unanimous. Thank you. Thanks very much. We're going to move now to public comment, and we have, let's see, two guests. So Jan or Nancy, is there anything you wanted to say? Jan is shaking his head. Or Linda, anything you'd like to say? Seeing no, no movement, we can move to our next agenda. Go ahead, item. Oh, wait, Nancy, did you want to say something?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'm a little bit confused. I know you received the letter. And it's part of your packet. So should I speak now or wait until you get to correspondence or what is appropriate?
Let's see, that, I think that will come up. We have that coming up right now under number four on our agenda.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. I appreciate that. Good. Okay. Any other public comment? Jeff Goodrich?
Yeah, because these aren't necessarily agenda items. I remain concerned about the minutes nominally reflecting what we discussed. And since the OML is going to be on a later agenda item, I just wanted to note my gratitude for bringing that up.
Okay. Okay, why don't we move to number three, then? The introducing our new planning and zoning coordinator. Rod, you want to take it away?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce to you Aaron Deena Moore. He is most recently from the town of Shelburne in Vermont, and Aaron joins us as the planning and zoning coordinator, and we look forward to working with him really closely on the slate of things the planning commission is involved in. Aaron is currently completing his masters in public administration from the University of Vermont and has, in this past weekend, moved to Windsor. So I'm sure we'll be seeing lots more of him soon.
Thanks, Rod.
Aaron, if you want to, if you want to just introduce yourself and maybe give a little bit of more background, you know, this is, this is a big moment.
Okay. So like Rod said, I've just come from the town of Shelburne, where I was working as their DRB coordinator and assistance zoning administrator. I'm currently getting my masters as well, like Rod said, and before that, I worked in the General Assembly during this legislative session for the Senate Health and Welfare Committee. I'm originally from a combination of Texas and Utah, kind of claim both, and I'm happy to be here.
Thanks, Aaron. We welcome you. We're happy to have you on the ground. That sounds good. I guess is today is your beginning or almost your beginning. I know how you, I know you'll be ramping up or what is the plan?
Monday was my first day.
Okay. Okay. Well, welcome. Glad you're here. Jeff?
Yeah, since the planning commission had a role in selecting folks for a lot of years until pretty recently, is it possible to get Aaron's resume so we have a, an understanding about his background?
Sure. I mean, why not, Aaron? That sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Good to know. It'll be good to get to know you. All right. All right. So moving on to our next topic, land use regulations and our, if you recall, at the last meeting, we talked about the job in front of us. We've already finished the administrative section or didn't finish it, but in any event, we've gotten a long way away or through the first two administrative sections of the zoning regs. Next big job ahead of us is is to look at land use. And we talked about hopes and dreams for that particular section. On the one hand, the, the town plan lays out very clearly, you know, the guidelines, the guideposts that we need to use for that section. I think we were just trying to give each of us a chance to really think about what that meant and where we would like to see the, you know, make sure the emphasis, objectives to cover. Rod summarized that in a handout that was in the packet, and you know, we can look over that and see if we have anything to add to that in terms of hopes and dreams. But we will need a process, you know, working with Aaron and Rod's help, you know, to get ourselves to the, the next section of the land use regs. We're all looking forward to that. You know, it's been a year, as we all know, working with, you know, part-time help from Rod with all of his other responsibilities. So it'll be good to you know, have more access and more time for discussion of these things. You know, in terms of some of the objectives, as I say, that were discussed at the last meeting, I don't know how much we want to go into this again, but as you can see in the chart, you know, of what we discussed, what's linked to the plan, which is really the key, key issue here. We can't make this stuff up. And then what is linked to statute, which is also very key. We can't fly in the face of statute. So basically, you know, we have a track to run on. And it's not, it's not unlimited width that track. We have to stay within those guidelines. The, I know one thing that we heard loud and clear from the DRB who uses this document most, most closely, having a clear document consistent with the town plan, consistent with statute. Those are all things we heard from the DRB when we met with them in January. We'll continue to involve them along the way just to make sure we are meeting their expectations in terms of usability of the document. You know, we know that's been a problem in the past with having repetition within the document, having to refer back and forth to different sections. We think we can avoid that this time. Okay? Something else that I think came up with the, you know, we've just to Nancy's letter here, request from the Historic Preservation Commission, and that is, you know, influence of that committee on the, having some input to the DRB review process and Nancy, I don't know if you want to say anything further to your letter. This, this isn't the time when we can actually take action on this. This, this idea will have to be considered as part of the rewrite of the zoning reg. So I want to make sure expectations on timing are set appropriately there. We do take, you know, I take your point personally, just from my own experience with historic preservation. But we also know that we have to live within certain guidelines within the state of Vermont, and, and that will be important, too, in terms of the way we go forward. Nancy, is there anything you wanted to comment on now with your letter?
Well, I guess I think there are two points. I think, I mean, there seem to be so many sort of moving pieces because there's the planning board piece with zoning and then our own mandate to, to designate and protect historic structures. And then the select board ordinance to us prohibiting us from participating in some of the development review actions. So it seems to me the select board, the preservation commission, and the planning commission need to come together and come up with some kind of a plan so that particularly, I mean, what I think what has distressed us most recently is that some of the properties that are on, that are owned by single families that are on the national register. And property owners have come to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a building permit, and they have been given one without, at times, or I think, without any review necessary at all. And sometimes, you know, whatever building they wanted to do has been just lovely and glorious, but at other times, I think it is sometimes compromised. The historic structure itself, and so we're not interested in rules and regulations, but just an opportunity to sit down with potential, you know, homeowner who wants to do something to his property and say, you know, have you considered this? Or, you know, you know, how can, how can we, you know, achieve what you want and, and also maintain the historic importance of your property?
Thanks, Nancy. I appreciate that. Ernie, does your comment or question, I know you have your hand raised, does it pertain to what Nancy just said, or can we respond to Nancy first?
No, I, I, when you were talking about the objective, and I put my hand up.
Okay, all right. Let's go back to that then. Thanks.
Why don't you finish with Nancy first and then?
Yeah, that's what I mean. Yeah, let's see. Yeah, that's what, let's go back to Nancy is what I meant. Thank you. Rod, can you comment on that? The interface between the, the DRB, the zoning regs, the historic commission?
Sure. So thanks, Jackie, and thanks for your comments, Nancy. So let me try and clear up some misunderstandings and misconceptions. So Norwich is a so-called CLG town that's a certified local government. There are, I think, over two dozen towns in Vermont that have at least part of their jurisdiction covered by a historic designated, designated historic district. So the village in Norwich comprises a historic district, which is mapped separately, and that's part of our participation in the certified local government program. The certified local government program is effectively funded through the federal government, through the US Department of the Interior, and they they send funds to the state, which then allocates them to individual communities for various projects around the issues of historic preservation. So Norwich has been a longstanding member of the program and has been a significant beneficiary of that program, receiving repeated cycles of funding to document and publicize the historic nature of of Norwich, both in and outside the so-called historic district, which is not exactly the same as the village business district, but is pretty close. So that being said, there are no design review standards in the existing zoning and subdivision regulations, and there's been a history of discussion around that in Norwich, as far as I understand. The previous chair of the Historic Preservation Commission was an adamant opponent of the idea of introducing design regulations and design review for, for Norwich. Norwich is definitely in the minority of communities that are in the certified local government program that do not have some function around design review. And so the, to answer Nancy's comments more directly, there is a mechanism or process currently in the zoning regulations for a potential zoning permit applicant to interface with the Historic Preservation Commission, or indeed town staff around the question of what they're going to do in terms of altering or affecting a structure that happens to be located in the historic district. So there isn't a mechanism, there isn't an informal arrangement, there is, there is nothing more than social, social pressure and the expectation that if you were to become the owner of a historic, a property in the historic district, that you would choose carefully how you were going to develop that property and act in ways that were sympathetic to the neighborhood and sympathetic to the structure itself in terms of any modifications or improvements to it. Sometimes people find themselves in situations where they're, they're torn, you know, they're, they've been, been drawn in different directions. So that might be as simple as they need to make the, the structure habitable. So they want to replace the windows with more efficient windows to reduce the draftiness and the complicated nature of trying to keep the structure heated in the winter. Some of it's around the practical consequences of living in the 22nd, you know, the, the 21st century rather than the 19th century. And so it's things like accommodation for vehicles or a charging station or such as, things such as that, which may be in conflict with the historic character of the structure and the, and the landscape. So other towns, Montpelier comes to mind, Dorset comes to mind, Shelburne comes to mind, Brattleboro, all these communities have design review panels of some form or another. They're often called committees. Sometimes they're called commissions. They are empowered through the town's regulatory structure, the ordinance, and they're given quite strongly prescribed parameters. And they are usually guided by the Department of the Interior's guidance on how to go about, best go about preserving historic structures.
Yeah.
As far as I know, I don't believe, I mean, Aaron might know this. I'm hoping he knows it. I don't think Shelburne controls for color. The only community I know that controls for color of structures, you know, in other words, a paint palette is Dorset, and Dorset is very straightforward. It's white, but a particular shade of white, and only that shade of white, of which there are hundreds of shades of white, and you can only have one. And it's a Benjamin Moore color, and it's got a code, and that's the only one you can use. And then there's a green, and the green is for trim. And that has a Benjamin Moore code, too, and that's the only one you can use as well. And so that's a very inviting community that's entirely white and green. And so as far as I'm aware, no other community is that stringent in their application of guidance and regulations, but, you know, Montpelier is probably the most evolved and arguably has the most at stake. If the planning commission was to consider adopting a section in the zoning regulations to do design review, then we would open up a whole discussion about where you want to set the bar. So do you want to be Dorset and have two colors? Or maybe three? Go, go crazy and increase it by 50% and have three. Do you want to specify paint codes? Do you want to, do you want to specify landscaping? Do you want to specify external lighting? Do you want to specify the materials that are chosen? So most communities get into some set of material choices. Some of them do it for the front elevation so that it can be seen by the street and don't have any restrictions on what materials you use for siding on the sides of the rear of the building. Some require, have restrictions on the, on the materials used for all the elevations of the building. Some control accessory structures like carports and garages, some don't. Many, probably most control roofing material choices. And oddly enough, their standing seam metal is usually actually not an appropriate solution. It's not an appropriate choice. So you end up back with slate.
So there's a whole range of whole range, yeah, a whole range of guidance.
And in each, each example, like each, literally each item, each material, each combination of materials, each texture question, each, every surface, you know, are you going to commit vinyl windows or not vinyl windows? Vinyl windows can be made to look historically appropriate. There is a whole range of architecturally appropriate vinyl windows that just made out of a substance that most people are repulsed by because they realize they didn't have vinyl windows in the 1850s. But, you know, if you're trying to actually replace 250 windows, it's the difference between maybe $400,000 for vinyl windows and one point something or other million dollars for actually handmade wooden windows that are going to work and replace the windows that you've got. So it's not an inconsiderable consideration. So these are the kinds of things that you get into, and these are important considerations. So if you want to set the bar somewhere, and so if you open up this topic, which I think is a great idea, if you want to open up the topic you to do it tonight, obviously, but the question of where are you going to put the bar and how are you going to justify putting the bar there, and then how are you going to implement it, become really the good questions to ask, but there, that will involve lengthy discussion.
Yeah.
And so right now, what we've got, yeah, right now, what we've got is a social expectation that people will make appropriate choices. Arguably, it works most of the time, not just in the village that part, you know, that, that part of the village that is the historic district, but I would say, but the devil is in the details, and I'm sure Nancy and her peers have got concerns about recent, recent decisions.
So so Nancy, again, in terms of process, it seems that you know, I think this will be considered, you know, this can be considered as part of our, you know, journey here to create the updated zoning regulations. But at the same time, I think what would be really useful is for the Star Preservation Commission to consider, okay, the range of possibilities, because I know when I came to town, it was, it was made very clear to me that although we have all these historic designations, there's like, just as Rod said, it's, you know, a handshake and a prayer that, that people will respect it, basically, okay? And, and, and not everybody's aware of what the rules are, or, or for all, all different reasons, as Rod just articulated, you know, other things can happen. But, but given all of your understanding of that, what does the, maybe something to spend some time on, you know, over the next months, is what would the Historic Preservation Commission recommend in terms of guidance? You know, I know I noticed in your letter a chance to talk with the DRB, but, but really, probably we need, you know, maybe give it a little more thought than that. Because the devil is in the detail here in terms of how do we implement, you know, how do we create something that's not so burdensome, that's not impossible, that people will be happy with?
And I think it's also important to, to talk to you about, about all this. That is the planning commission, because I mean, I think we need to, I, I don't think, you know, Rod, you know, correctly described all sorts of draconian things, and I don't think we may be meant to have zillions and zillions of rules and regulations. We know, but, but how in the world we might and, and certainly through programming, the Historic Preservation Commission is, is going to, you know, talk more and more about, you know, how, how do you restore you know, or make changes to an historic home, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the education piece is important. But I think, you know, it would be helpful, I don't know, to sit down with you, the two commissions, more commission members present, maybe Phil Sable will be joining, but maybe not in time to talk about this. Discuss it a little more thoroughly, and we will think about it more thoroughly. Keep in mind all of your comments, and, and hopefully we can talk about it in the future.
We can also get examples from other towns, too, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. What's working, what's not? I think that's another good way to go. Rod, I know you're still on this topic. I think, Jeff, are you on this topic? I'm, I'm just trying to stay on this topic. Okay, go ahead, Jeff. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I was going to ask a question or two of Rod, and I thought Rod did a nice job summarizing general issues related to, to historic considerations. I, I've talked with the past chair. I understand issues in dealing with architectural review and historic considerations in various towns. I think this is, this is potentially a significant issue that I would again suggest, at least a subcommittee of the planning commission essentially be created to investigate what these implications are, and to the extent there's someone on the DRB that has real regulatory knowledge, involve them along with the historic folks in that subcommittee to investigate issues. More specifically, I was going to ask Rod, because I think he has quite a bit of knowledge and background to, and I know he's transitioned to a different place, but I would ask him, given his knowledge of Norwich, and my belief that he's, he's done a decent job with respect to building permits, et cetera, if there is such a thing in Norwich, to suggest how, I know, Ron, to suggest how how we might consider reasonably the, the implications. I know he, he talked about, you know, charging vehicles. I've encountered stuff with solar arrays and, you know, et cetera. But I, but I think Rod has some very good practical knowledge to maybe start creating a list and a subcommittee of the planning commission could then investigate this. And I think it's going to take more than months.
Yeah, I know. Okay. Rod, you had your hand up?
So yeah, just to, I'll try and respond to both Nancy and Jeff there. So just to be really clear, the structure here is, is that the planning commission is involved in the process of drafting the new land use regulations, and the DIB you know, as a, as sort of a party, you know, the members, individual members of the DIB are welcome to comment on it and can rely on their experience and their knowledge to do so. But I actually would caution the planning commission against actively But I actually would caution the Planning Commission against actively involving the D I B in the formulation of the regulations, because you actually want to maintain that separation between the Planning Commission being the drafters of the regulation and the D I B being, um, placed in the role of implementing it. And I think that the current D I B would be reluctant to engage in this part, because they understand their role there as, as implementers, not, not drafters, if, to, to use two bad verbs. Um, so that being said, I think that, um, yeah, I think Jeff is correct. I think that if you do this seriously, would particularly in a community like Norwich, where there's a lot of, um, experience and knowledge and, and passion around the question, that you'd need to allow plenty of space for those things to be, um, drawn out and dealt with. And I think that the easiest thing to do would be to look at other towns' regulations in terms of what they do and don't cover, but also look at the mechanism. So just to be really clear, most towns in Vermont do not issue building permits, because most towns in Vermont do not conduct building inspections. So in New Hampshire, it's much more common to have code enforcement, and they issue building permits, and somebody, it's somebody's job to drive or walk around and inspect buildings at key moments in either their construction or their renovation to ensure code compliance. Nobody does that, um, at all practically in Vermont, some, certainly outside of Chittenden County. And those that do focus narrowly, they are the focus just on rental properties, or some, or just on commercial properties. They very rarely do residential properties as a whole, and they very, very rarely do owner occupied residential properties. And that's because there basically isn't enough people to do the work, and there's not enough acceptance that there's a set of regulations about, you know, there's not a building code that's enforced. So, and when it does touch down, it's the energy code or something similar, and then that's, um, self-regulated, so the contractor signs off on the job and says, yep, I did it, um, and that's the end of it. Um, and so that's okay, uh, in, within, within the context of Vermont, that's, that's typically the way it goes. Um, so we don't issue building codes in Norwich, what we do is that we issue zoning permits. So a zoning applicant, a zoning permit applicant needs to demonstrate that what they're doing is consistent with the code. And so there is no mechanism, like I said, to review building material choices, building color choices, or even the, even the composition of a, of a, an addition to an existing structure. Because the limit of review is, is it within the setbacks? The only time it could come up, which won't affect the village, because it's not in the special flood hazard area, is the special flood hazard area, that would be the one moment that you might be able to take a closer look at some of those choices. And even that, even in that instance, none of these things are irrelevant. So in, in Vermont, one and two family dwellings are exempt from conditional use review. And moreover, in the last session of the legislature, you cannot use character of the neighborhood as a, um, as an attribute to reject an application for, for housing development anymore. So even in the context of a design review, um, function, it's not clear, given that most recent action on the part of the legislature, how you would go about preventing somebody from building something that was incongruous with historic nature of the neighborhood, um, if it was housing.
Right. So in terms of a process, um, uh, yeah, there was a Subcommittee suggested, I think, you know, a couple of things there. And, you know, in, in the environment that we're in right now in our town, I'm not comfortable trying to create a Subcommittee. It's, it's a lot more work, and there's a lot more concern, everybody's concerned about open meeting law, I don't want to go there. Uh, so I, I would, I would not be in support of that. But, um, I do think, Nancy, perhaps this kind of work and detailed discussion could go on at the, um, Historical Planning Commission, if, you know, as part of your meetings, your warned and minuteed meetings. Aaron, uh, you know, it's been a tradition for a planning person to attend those meetings. You know, it's been impossible lately because of, uh, all the other responsibilities, but, you know, get you there, get one of us there, we can have a discussion, we can report back to this group, you know, or two of us there, whoever want, you know, we have someone who wants to volunteer to be the representative, if anybody else wants to come, they're invited. Uh, but maybe that way, Nancy, we could get this dialogue going that you asked, and not all go bananas with, um, additional committees and responsibilities that come along with that. Would some, would an approach like that be acceptable to you?
I think that sounds like a good plan, and maybe, uh, we can be in touch, um, about various responsibilities, and then have an open meeting to do.
Absolutely, yeah. And we'll bring the, bring, get the examples from the other towns, and we'll think about how could this possibly work here? Does this make any sense? Come up with some recommendations, I think that might be a way to really study the issue and come up with, you know, come up with some focused, um, recommendations. Jeff did, and, uh, and Vince, you have comments on this topic? Great. Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Jeff. Whoa, wait, you're on mute there or something?
Yeah, Vince was first.
Go ahead, Vince.
Uh, Rob, but, uh, Rod might have answered this at the end, but is there any way to just flag anything that would be considered either in the historic district or a registered historic place to automatically go to the design review? And then someone from the historic district or historic preservation committee would be able to comment it, comment on it? Or is that just, is that too men, too many of the houses of, uh, is that too much of the town?
Hmm, that's not the problem, Vince, so sorry, um, Jackie, do you want me to answer this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, that's not the issue, Vince, the issue is, is that we don't have a design review function at all. And so there is no legal means for actually saying to somebody, oh, you just purchased a house in the historic district. You need to go and talk to somebody at the, at the Historic Preservation Commission before you change the color of your house, or add, add
Put on a new roof or whatever.
You know, they've got the same due process rights as everybody else. As long as they comply with the zoning regulations as they're written, they're golden. That, that is literally the way it works. And so, you know, the, there's, there's no obligation on them or the town to, to find a way that, um, you know, that is sympathetic to the, to the district. It, it, and, you know, I think to some extent, what's happened for many years is that the people who lived and owned properties in the historic district have been, you know, participants in the preservation process and, and acutely aware of, of, of what they have. And I think that in a couple of instances recently, that people have made different choices. People, you know, people new to town have made different choices or had a different awareness of what was going on. Um, and that's caused, that, that's, that's what's generating this, this discussion right now.
Right.
But there's nothing, this is, this is not to say that they've done anything wrong in terms of the way the zoning regulations work.
Correct, yeah.
If you need a specific rule that they could potentially be
Yes, yeah.
Breaching, and then, then for, in order to talk to them, not just the fact
So, so some communities do a very light touch, they'll just say something like, if your property is in the historic district, then we'll convene a meeting, an informal meeting, where you will need to discuss with the design review team what you're proposing to do, and they will give you feedback. And, um, that doesn't obligate the owner to follow the feedback. It just makes them aware in a slightly formal setting that, oh, I somehow managed to buy a three-story building with five apartments in a, in a historic district. And now there's a group of people in the community that don't want me to use vinyl siding, they want me to use, you know, true, you know, painted weatherboard. Oh, that's a problem, because that's five times more expensive, and I was just trying to make, you know, I was just trying to make this five apartment building, you know, livable, and I don't have much, I don't have enough money, or whatever it is. And so I've actually seen design teams say, look, you can do the back and the sides vinyl, but just try and make, try and make sure you do the front with wood, and they're like, okay, I can do that, and then, then that's, that's been the end of the discussion.
Right.
Uh, other communities, it's like, no, you use the Benjamin Moore code, that's two digits different from the one that we specified, so now you're going to have to repaint it. Um, so, you know, that's, that's the spectrum.
Okay. Uh, Jeff, anything more before we close this out?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, uh, I, I don't understand, uh, I, I talk about subcommittees, and I heard you, Jackie, say as one vote that you're not, uh, in favor of subcommittees. Now, uh, I would like to note that, uh, two things. One, the Affordable Housing Subcommittee has done a marvelous job throughout, uh, this time without staff, uh, keeping track of things, and I think we could do that readily, as, as we have done, uh, in my thirty years here. There's no need for staff to participate necessarily. So it's important to me that, uh, that, that the commission contemplate possibility of subcommittees, uh, rather than have someone simply say, I'm not in favor, so we're not going to do it.
So, uh, we can call that to question if you like, Jeff, that's fine with me, I have no problem with that. Just trying to suggest a way forward so that Nancy can get some closure, and, um, and I do feel strongly in this environment that, um, uh, yeah, I'd like to use the structure that we have in place versus adding, adding more structure to try to get work done.
Yeah, maybe, maybe a future agenda item, because I have a lot to say about this.
Great. Okay, so, um, in terms of the way forward with Nancy, do we want to make a motion? Jeff?
Yeah, so I just received this packet, I'm going to either abstain or vote no until I have time to process.
Brian?
You have Ernie and Vince with their hands up before me.
Yeah, I thought Ernie was from before, and I think Vince is from before, so that's why, uh, that's why I'm trying, not ignoring them, but I think they, they're from before. They, they have another, uh, Vince already commented, and Er- Ernie has something on our topic that we talked about earlier. So I'm, I'm trying to keep track.
Yeah, I, I'd like to be helpful, what's the motion you're looking for?
So, yeah, so all I'm saying is, um, you know, that, um, or maybe we just need a volunteer, is there someone here who would volunteer to attend the, uh, Norwich Historic, um, Preservation Commission meetings? Uh, and be a representative from the, uh, Planning Commission to get this ball moving? Um, is there anyone who would like to volunteer for that? Brian?
I'm happy to do it.
Thank you. Okay, good, good. And, uh, I will be happy to participate as well, uh, as I can with my schedule, go ahead, um. Uh, Nancy?
I just want to say thank you very much, I appreciate all the time you've devoted to this. And would also say we do have a, a meeting coming up on Monday, but that would be too soon. So, at any rate, uh, later on this fall, you know, when, once the, uh, Preservation Commission has discussed what you were proposing, uh, I will be in touch with you, Jackie, and
That'll be great, yeah, good, let's get there, cut on it, you know, you can do a download of all of this, get there, cut on it. Um, Aaron will be there to support, so, um, I think, I mean, if not Monday, in the future. So I think that'll work, I think that'll work out really well, okay.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. All right, um, so moving back to Ernie, I know you had something you wanted to say before.
Yeah, like I said, I, I, it's just that, that if the things had moved on, I'd put on my, put up my hand and things moved on, I just didn't want to do in the flow of what we were, had moved to. I just wanted to, to make some comments about, uh, first I start with a question. Um, what, under that table, uh, objectives, stated objectives, what does the box with an X in it mean?
Sorry, I've just lost that paper.
That's the opposite of the check mark, I mean, so, uh, uh, you know, a cro- and, and X is no, and a, and a, and a check is yes.
Okay, um, so, okay, so, but I wanted to just clarify a little bit. Um, what I was getting at, these, these are, these are, you know, uh, sort of paraphrases of what I've said, which is fine for the most part. But, um, it's stuff, the, the number, the number one, uh, numeral, uh, Roman numeral one, not staff drafted, um, it was created by PCers, is in fact, um, um, linked to statute, because the, the, the Planning Commission is responsible for both the town plan and regulations. It's the town plan that's responsible for it, not the zoning administrator or anybody else. Um, so, um, I still believe that, as I've said, since I joined the, the commission, um, this is supposed to be a deliberative body that discusses, and, and I, frankly, I think is it's hard to discuss stuff unless you've sort of had a hand in, in, in coming up with it. Um, so we're the legislative body, um, when it comes to, uh, planning in this town. Um, the DRB is the ones that enforce, they're more like a quasi judicial thing. We're more, I mean, in, in discussions in the legislature, that we are considered, uh, when they created the statutes and so on, this is a legislative body, that's, this is, this is viewed as a legislative body, and we should be creating the legislation, not just approving it, or rubber stamping it or anything like that, we should be debating it. Um, so, uh, the NA in the link to statute is, is improper. Is to the, the, the no, uh, and prevent suburbanization. Um, down lower, it talks about anti-sprawl, anti-growth, which are both linked to the town plan, anti-sprawl, uh, sprawl. And the prevents suburbanization really is sort of a subset of, um, anti-sprawl and growth controls. So, um, I would argue that, that the no is not appropriate there, because it's, it, it may be redundant, but it's not no. Uh, and then the reduced taxes, again, statute actually says, uh, that, that the Planning Commission is, um, um, it is in their purview to discuss economics. And although we can't say we're going to reduce taxes by such and so, we can consider the effects of the regulations and, uh, that we make, um, and the effect they have on taxes. Um, and they do have, you know, growth and all that sort of stuff have direct effects on taxes. So for instance, if we were to promote growth heavily, then we would also be promoting heavily growth of taxes. Um, so, um, um, certainly, uh, reduced taxes is within the purview of the, uh, insofar as that it is part of, of discussing economics. Um, um, and, and it is, it is, so that N slash A is inappropriate there too. Um, that's it.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Ernie. Rod, is there anything else you wanted to add there?
Uh, no, I'm fine, thanks.
Okay, okay. Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, in addition to agreeing with, uh, Ernie about, uh, item one, about the role of the Planning Commission, um, I think, it, it seems to me, based on statute, taxes is probably the wrong term to use here, because if we're talking about uh, impacts the infrastructure and the likely costs that, that are generated from that, a- all of the infrastructure issues that go to that, whether it's utilities, uh, transportation, whatever, are, are directly tied to statute and our town plan.
Yeah, I know this issue of number one comes, you know, it's been brought up now, um, by, uh, Ernie and Jeff uh, a number of times in the last few months, and I, I guess, I mean, I've thought about it, and, um, I know that, uh, you know, I, I, you know, I, I don't want to go, I don't want a carpenter, you know, uh, uh, coming in to fix my plumbing, uh, I mean, I, I think we, I think we look for experts to, you know, provide guidance and, uh, and and, um, advice, and, um, it doesn't make any sense to me, and this is my opinion now, I'm speaking for myself. It doesn't, and I don't think it's realistic, you know, as a group, that we think we're going to sit down and write regulations. It's not what we are, I don't think, um, equipped to do, have time to do, and that's not the way this is supposed to work. We have paid staff, experts in place who've studied the topic, know the topic very well. I think we can all benefit from their guidance and their experience. And of course, we need to review the materials, we need to debate the materials, we change the materials. We have done all of those things in my time on the Planning Commission. But, um, to think that, um, I, you know, I just think it's, I, I, I don't understand why we spend so much time talking about this point, because to me, um, you know, it just, it's not serving any good purpose. And it's, and it's completely unrealistic, so that's my personal opinion. Would anyone else like to share an opinion before Jeff and, um, and Ernie talk? And I do want to hear Jeff and Ernie talk again about this, go ahead. Anyone else? Okay, go ahead, Jeff, I think you were first, and then Ernie.
I, I think Ernie was first.
Okay, go ahead, Ernie.
All right, um, first of all, this is about the fact that, A, um, this is a small town. Um, it is meant to be run by it, and, and a government of this small town is intended to be run by the citizens of the town, amateur or not, for, as we also do For as we also do have a lot of expertise, actually, right within this commission. Myself, speaking for myself, I've worked for the Legislative Council. I I I think I know something about writing stat regulations or statutes, rules, whatever you facet, whatever you want to call them in this case, so I do know what I'm talking about there. I also even know the technical stuff, too. I've brought that in to my discussions here about certain technical. So we do have expertise, and I am qualified to do this. I suspect that Jeff, because of his experience with the staff at the statutes, he has expertise. But the other thing is, is that when we start having the professionals, hired professionals take over the roles that we as citizens should be taking on, what we're doing is we're giving up. Basically, this is a democracy. We're supposed to be participating in our own government, and we are not doing that when we are either denied because the professionals sort of can overwhelm us, or there are it's it's completely wrong to take away the right of the citizens in this town to actually come up with the legislation in this town. That's wrong. That's that's completely contrary to the point of of living in a rural town, or in a Vermont town, or in a New England town, for that matter. I mean, this is the the nature of the, you know, we're, we are granted by the state. I know it's a Dillon State. We are granted by the state the right to have certain controls over our own government, and when the professionals take over, we are denied that. Because the professionals don't answer to us. They answer, as a matter of fact, in the case of a town and town manager, that it is clear, he is in charge of everything. And on top of it all, he can even disregard the the select board, even as long if his contract or her contract does not include a specific types of cause that for which they could be dismissed. Otherwise, they can, they can do whatever they want during that time if they are town, town, town manager. So we have a problem.
Ernie, I I would just say that you have contributed a lot to the documents, you know, when when asked, and I think there's plenty of opportunity, and you've taken advantage of that. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I hope you don't comment on what I have to say, Jackie, and I hope you don't keep commenting on what people have to say. Just let people speak. But let the commission process as the commission will instead of a comment after every single thing that's offered. Having said that, I completely disagree with you. Having served on this commission for thirty years or so, the commission wrote the regulations while it both wrote the rules and did the DRB's role with respect to reviewing projects. Until around two thousand four or five, when the DRB was created, this commission did both functions. This commission was highly experienced because the participants on the commission had their hands in planting the crops, harvesting the crops, bringing the crops to reality. And I might say, Phil Deckard, as a staff member, I thought that a decent job supporting us until sometime not too long ago, when the town manager received it and said, Phil, you work for me. You no longer work for the Planning Commission. So from my perspective, I think what you're saying is not true. I would like to encourage us to get our, roll up our sleeves, get involved, so we know what we're talking about as citizens of this community. As residents, I only lived here six decades so far. I would like to see the citizens of this of this community adhere to the VSA's and return to the role that the VSA's that the law calls us to do.
Okay, so let's move on then. The next topic on the agenda is the wastewater study. Rod, you want to give us an update?
Yeah, we are playing phone tag basically with the with the consultants about trying to find appropriate times to get started. I hope to be speaking with them soon. We're just, we sort of missed our slot earlier on due to some delays caused by pulling the steering committee together, and then I've been really busy, so it's, yeah, I'm hoping that we'll have some news by next month.
So Rod, can you just tell us what should the people that were appointed to this group, what should they expect next? When will they hear from someone?
I'm hoping that that was, that's, you know, one of the topics that we have that we have a discussion, so I'm hoping that that something will be ready to be shared really soon.
Yeah, I think it's important that we get in touch with them with some communication.
I agree.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Any other questions for Rod? Okay. All right. Next topic on the agenda is our draft response to the select board. And let's see what this is about. Is the select board, in an effort to establish priorities, has asked each one of the town committees to say, what are your top, you know, what are you working on? What are your top priorities? Okay? And we go to the item that's in the packet. Here we go. Yeah, what's the committee's charge, as you all understand it? This is the draft that is in your packet. This is right off of our website. Our responsibilities has already been mentioned here several times, are described in Vermont statute. The BSA twenty four, it includes preparing a town plan, preparing zoning and subdivision regulations based on the town plan, conducting studies on other planning issues, and making recommendations to the select board. That's the answer to question one that's on our website. Okay? Question two, what are the committee's current initiatives? Provide a timeline if applicable. Simply stated, our initiatives are driven by the objectives, the policies and action items, all of those sections in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty eight town plan. All these action items are summarized on page fifty six to sixty. You can see which ones have our names on it. Our timelines that are listed in the plan have been affected by both by COVID and Rod's transition to town manager. Having said that, we've still gotten some work done, which is amazing and good. The the initiatives you can see written here, we're in the midst of rewriting the two thousand and nine land regulations and incorporating a whole series of recommendations from the town plan as we do that, including maintaining the rural character of Norwich by preserving working lands and forests, recognizing the important ecosystem service performed by forests, implementing policies related to flood hazards, riparian areas, and stormwater management, and implementing recommendations made in the housing chapter. So those are some of the highlights that we need to take into, this is what I was talking about in terms of guidelines. We need to take these things into consideration with the rewrite of these land use regulations. It's not a clean slate. We have to address all of these topics. The our next sections, two technical sections, the site plan review and the subdivision standards, our expected timeline. It's a minimum of twelve months. Okay, if all goes well, we're happy to have Aaron on board and see if we can get chugging on that. The final report from the density study is scheduled for review. It looks like we hope to have that in October, based on Rod's feedback. This is an important input for the land use regulation updates, as you all know. And it was grant funded, and that's a good thing. We've engaged the consultant in the wastewater study, as we've already discussed, and as we know, and if all goes well, this work will be completed in spring of twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. We'll get a report from that. Once again, this work is grant funded, and we've also developed and proposed a process for creating sidewalk trails and bike path master plan. We we did that at our last meeting in July. And we sent off a letter to the select board on that topic. We've asked the select board for support on that. In any event, waiting to hear if there is bandwidth to get that done. And we also provide support for the Affordable Housing Subcommittee initiatives. If you recall, in our July meeting, also, we approved a letter to the select board looking for their blessing on Affordable Housing Committee, working with Two Rivers to apply for a grant to study the town-owned parcels that they've identified to see if there is any possibility that some few units could be built on those properties. So that's what's been in the works for this group in the last year. Our goals, our activities for the next three years, completing, this is the third question the select board asked, completing the rewrite and adoption of new land use regulations, facilitating the completion of this sidewalks, trails, and bike paths master plan, continuing to support the Affordable Housing Subcommittee initiatives as needed. And lastly, facilitating the completion of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty eight town plan action items by other town committees as needed. So trying to shepherd that thing through. Is there any discussion on this draft response, and then we can take action. Go ahead, Ernie?
Yeah, there's two parts. The first part that I want to talk about is simply, in part two and part three, there's basically lip service paid to maintain the rural character, working lands, all that sort of stuff. But below that, so so basically, the the environmental and the rural character issues are just treated cursorily. But then we get into stuff that's related to encouraging development, or at least facilitating development, and those are relatively clearly stated. There there, there's, they're almost like action items, and that's in both section two and section three. There's this talk about all kinds of built stuff, but there's no talk about encourage encouraging, for instance, land conservation, no, no discussion about encouraging farming, no encouragement, nothing at all about climate change. Some people don't believe in that, but that's beside the point. It was the number one concern in a survey we did asking the citizens of the town, what are they concerned about? The number one concern was climate change, yet there's nothing in that. There's also, there was nothing granted in the town plan, what little there was, was removed. The only thing that was in there about the climate change, combating climate change, was removed.
Ernie, I'm sorry, are you talking about this piece of paper that?
Yes, I'm talking about this paper. I'm talking about this. This, this reads like, like conservation, environmental issues, rural character, all of that is one sentence, but there are a whole number of development-related things that there are actual, there's an actual detail of what we've done so far, what we're going to do, and so on and so forth, and then there's discussion, more similar discussion, it's much, it's much more abbreviated, but in section three, again, completely rewrite of the Adoption of the Land Use Regulations Act would circle back to number two, especially where it relates to conservation and environmental issues and so on. I am not seeing in any of our activities really serious concern about environmental issues, about farming, about woods. I'm not seeing it. And I, when I, when I, you know, we have a density study, but that's being done by an expert. Who knows what they're going to come up with? We've had actually a very good density algorithm in the past. We're going to get rid of that, I suspect. We're going to go to straight up zoning is what I understand is the goal. I'm not positive of that, and I hope I'm wrong. But you know, again, all of this is being done, all of these things are being done by so-called professionals. None of that is being discussed first. We're supposed to discuss after the professionals come up with their answers for us to to mull.
I just want to point out, Ernie, just so you remember, we did, we've been over the density study a couple of times in this group, so we've, we've got, we've, we've discussed it. So I just want you, it's not like we haven't seen it before. We've discussed it at least twice on our agenda, so just.
I I I am aware of that, but the point is, what I'm saying is, is that we don't, we, there, there are topics that that are critical to planning, critical as a part of our responsibility, and they get very short shrift. But things like affordable housing, which is basically an invitation for developers to come into the town, and a number of other issues like that, those are the things we spend an awful lot of time on, and in a lot of detail, and a lot of writing on, and a lot of pages in the town plan, and so on. If you do a word count on, for instance, forests, it's a whole lot less than, let's say, housing.
We also have the energy chapter, which is is significant, but okay. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, so I'm going to be a lot shorter. My chief issue foremost is process. The way it used to work, and I'm trying to hearken back to what I think the laws ask us to do is if someone externally has requests, it's presented to the Planning Commission to talk about how the Planning Commission would like to proceed with that request. It doesn't matter if it's a chair of the select board or Nancy Hogg Osgood. And then based on our decision, we proceed. Having said that, I I haven't had this in enough time to review. There are some elements that I I semi support. There are a number of things that I might change. My most, my greatest concern, I would say, I would not use the word climate, rather, I would use the term sustainability based on what I perceive relates to science. And to that end, I assume that I'm semi agreeing with with Ernie's concern, so I can't support this because of lack of process or time to 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 create a sound document.
Okay, let's hear from others. Brian, the select board has asked us to respond to these two, three questions. Is there anything else you would like to see done with this piece of paper?
Yeah, and you know, thinking of Ernie's concerns, I think that the select board request lacks some clarity, and that might be at kind of the heart of of this disagreement. No, I interpreted the select board, the select board's request as asking for us to just report like the state of play today, what what we're working on. And so when I look at this, this document here, that it's been prepared, this one-page summary, this is an accurate reflection of our work plan. If you look at our agendas, minutes, tasks, you know, over the past whole bunch of months, there's no new material here. It it gives a faithful reporting to the select board of our of our current activities and our and our projected activities over the coming months. It seems that Ernie and perhaps Jeff have a have a different understanding of this select board's request, which is for us to give new priorities or set a new work plan at this time. That that's just a fundamentally different interpretation than I have. So so when they speak of, you know, why, why aren't there activities here related to climate change? Well, great, let's put something on the agenda, have a policy proposal. Let's work on a relevant section of the land use rules, like no one, I haven't heard anyone say it's a bad idea to do that kind of work, but we're just not undertaking it at this present moment. And so that's why it's not in this report to the select board of what we're doing at this present moment. So I would just suggest to Ernie that many of the folks on the commission share your concerns and objectives. We just had a different understanding of the request from the select board. I saw it as a totally non-controversial request to just produce a quick summary based on the state of play today. And so I think it's a pretty faithful representation of that. I don't have any concerns with sending this, and I don't think it changes or forestalls any any future policy initiatives that any of us may have.
Thanks, Brian. Melissa?
Yeah, to echo Brian, that was my understanding when you sent this out, is I thought it was just a quick update to the select board of what we're doing right now. And to me, this this did seem like an accurate summary of what we're doing now, so I would be fine with sending it onto the select board without any changes.
Vince? Oh, wait, you're on mute.
Yeah, I think Brian said it really, really well. I guess, since the last question is about in the next three years, if maybe we could add some things. I guess since the last question is about in the next three years, if maybe we could add some things about sustainability or forests or preserving the care, it's something more specific to, to that. Since in the three years and you know, like Brian said, I think a lot of people, everyone's pretty much on the same page about that. So I think that, that might be something to kind of show in, in action and coming up in the future.
Okay. Does anybody have any words for what that might be, Ernie?
Well, I would, I would suggest, for instance, some, some, some relatively specific language in number, section number three. I, I think, I think Vince is correct. If, 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 if I accept Brian's understanding of, of this as, as accurate, then I would want to see number three expanded considerably with some specific, specific things we would do. And I would want to see them related to conservation, farming, forestry. You know, I, and I think it was something that could, could, a specific thing could be that algorithm that was related to population and forestry. The forest blocks that was removed from the town plan, that could, that, that should be part of our regulations anyways. And I would suggest that something, some kind of commitment to that sort of planning tool, planning tools, not just that one, but others too, would be, would be useful.
Yeah, if we go back to the energy chapter, I think maybe where we would find that, Rod, where would we find the best action item that we're tasked with here related to this topic? I've got my copy here, I'm just looking.
I think that the best summary of the situation is in the land use chapter and the natural resources chapter. And there's extensive mapping on the question of forest blocks.
Yeah.
And raises the question of how best to encounter the question of preserving forest blocks using land use regulation tools. And so I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to sort of make this
Yeah.
more confusing than it already is or, or sort of getting to sort of splitting hairs. But what I'd say is that in the time since the town plan was adopted, the regional plan has been revised. And the regional plan now contains specific language with regard to development in forest blocks. And the land use regulations that the planning commission are working on now are going to have to encounter that language in the regional plan with regard to forest blocks. Some people may regard that language as, you know, not enough, I guess, and some people might regard it as too much. My recollection of it is that it sets parameters for basically the length of the driveway. So in the instance where you have a wooded parcel, it's making a requirement that the driveway be less than a certain length and/or the, the, the the area of disturbance, the area of development for the actual house and the accompanying structures are either outside the forest block or as close as, you know, within a certain distance of the existing road. Now, that, that's fine. And, and the region planning commission obviously worked on that for some considerable time before they came up with that policy. And we're a party to the regional planning commission like the other towns and the regional plan got approved. If if we were to, if we were to develop land use regulations that were consistent with the original plan, then, then we need to make sure that the development standards that we have for at least some part of town would, would, would reflect that. So then the question gets back to how much of the land area do you want to zone in a way that's appropriate to preserve forest blocks? As you point out that a very large percentage of the town of Norwich, as it's currently mapped, meets the definition of a forest block. So to put it around a different way, there are probably some of you right now that have a home that's in a forest block and you just don't know it, but maybe. And so there's a, there's a, there's a, this is there's, there's already a large amount of development in the forest blocks as they're mapped. And so it becomes then a question, kind of a balancing act for the planning commission about how to set these parameters in future. And what to do with the fact that you know, you already have like a large number of homes and accessory structures that are built in the forest block.
Just as a point of clarification, because I mean, this document is not meant to be writing our land use regulations or anything else. All we're doing is saying the work we did and what we, what we're going to do. And, and, and I, I just want to emphasize again, I said it at the beginning, but complete the rewrite and adoption of new land use regulations. We're not writing those in a vacuum. There is a lot of detail on what things that we, all different requirements related to climate and everything else that we want to incorporate into those land use regulations. So
Right, I, I, I believe that the commission's taken a very broad view so far.
Yeah.
Of what sorts of things should be influencing the final regulations and you're nowhere near.
Right.
You're, you're not even considering, you know, any meaningful draft of the language. So there's, there's ample opportunity to implement, you know, to, to, to incorporate more language that's specifically responsible to
And this document does not define that at all. I mean, it's just saying, we're working on that topic. That's what it says. Anyway, so two more comments and then maybe we can decide if we want to move this forward or not tonight. Okay. Rod, your hand is up. I think it should be down. Ernie, I think you were first.
I, I, I was just going to say that, you know, I, I've so far, you know, limited what I've said, it used as an example. It's basically, by way of example, the forest blocks, but there are other issues too. We've got to keep in mind that, you know, we talked about retaining, you know, how did we rephrase it? Maintaining the rural character of Norwich. Rural character does, among other things, include not only the forest blocks, it also includes farmland. It includes a whole, a very large number of things. And farmland isn't even on, isn't even mentioned here, I don't think. Working lands, it's not quite the same thing as farmland. You know, and that's, the farmland is, is critical too. That's, that's what makes Vermont, Vermont's not tech central, central. This is not Silicon Valley. This is really a farming state. And to take, to think it's something other and to think that Norwich should be different from that. First of all, it defies the people that have moved in this, into this place in the past. Who moved to a rural, rural state and a rural town. And now there's, there's all these things across the way. We have a multi-billion dollar corporation wanting to sort of turn this, this, this region into metro Boston. Our mini metro Boston. It's, we, we have a lot of pressure that we have to fight.
Yeah, finally, it is mentioned in the town plan though, Ernie, just, just keep in mind, just to reiterate that point. All of these ideas are in our town plan, this, that, that you're mentioning.
But some, some have more mention than others. And the, the ones that have more mention don't tend to be the ones that I've talked about.
Okay. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah. Notwithstanding what I said previously, in an attempt to contribute under three, I would be far more general and say something like define and prioritize attainable, sustainable goals with appropriate regulatory changes for the next three years.
Define and prioritize appropriate
Prior, define and prioritize attainable, sustainable goals with appropriate regulatory changes.
Okay.
Some, something like
Okay, anybody have anything to improve upon that? I'd like that, Jeff, thank you. Anybody have anything to improve? Okay. I don't see any hands. Can we hear a motion then? Go ahead, Brian.
I move to submit this with Jeff's proposed change to the select board.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Vince. Okay, thank you. Okay. By a show of hands, Rod, are you okay with that language? Define and prioritize attainable, sustainable goals with appropriate regulatory changes? Okay, good. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, we have, I see. I think, I think Ernie has his hand on his chin. No, Jeremy's raising it. Okay, I see Vince, I see Melissa, I see Brian, I see Jackie. Okay, all opposed? I see Ernie, I see Jeff. Okay, all right. Moving along, the next topic on our agenda is the announcements, reports, directors update, et cetera. I mentioned earlier, the letters to the select board on the sidewalk master plan and the, in the planning grant application. Those letters have been presented and we are awaiting a response. Brian, anything else you want to report on affordable housing? Okay. And Rod, any announcements that you want to?
No, I think, I think my biggest announcement was Aaron right at the beginning of the meeting. So there you go.
Okay, all right, thanks. That was good news, really good news. Vince, you have the question about the sidewalk status and maybe Rod, you could summarize for, and I know there was a great information in the select board packet this week on the Beaver Meadow situation. Is that the one you're referring to, Vince? Just Beaver Meadow, not the general sidewalk master plan? You're, you're talking about sidewalks?
Well, I was specifically talking about just the general sense of traffic and
Oh, I see.
eating and everything. Especially been documenting on the, on the listserv and just, I just was really taken aback by how many people are just speeding coming into town. And also like the, someone mentioned that they got flipped off by someone driving down the road. And that actually happened to me the, the next day too, so. And that this, like these people entitlement, if you tell them to slow down and like fight back to you. So, yeah, I just, I know we've talked about sidewalks and pedestrians and bikes and everything, but as far as ways to affect traffic flow, I would just like to discuss if there's anything we can do, whether it's through land use regulation, whether it's making suggestions to the select board of whether it's something larger or something as small as like there should be some stop signs or speed bumps or we should change the way that the, you know, the roads shouldn't be 12 feet wide in a 25. They should be 10 feet wide. They should like, the, the main problem is because we don't have any police officers. Just really bothers me is people think that the job of the police is to sit out there with the, with a radar gun. And like, that's the problem is that people are speeding because there's not a police officer there. And that's not the case at all. It's because the roads are the wrong size for the speed limit and the type of area that it's in. So just since we're, we go into a lot of thought to come up with a way the neighbor, the area should be, whether it's rural residential or commercial. But we should still have some input on whether, you know, you should be able to drive a semi-truck into a commercial district, but not necessarily through a residential.
Okay.
It seems like we should have some, I, I, so as a new, as a new member, I just like to know like what our abilities are here.
Okay, thanks, thanks Vince. Ernie, did you have another similar question or?
Well, I, I, I wanted to sort of make a comment that's related. I mean, it's, it's not just at the center of town that this is a problem. I mean, on, on Kendall Station Road, people are easily doing 40 miles an hour on a dead end road. You know, there's some people that have almost gone airborne over the railroad crossing. On the other hand, at the other side of town on Tiger Town Road, this town has kept on widening. It is, it looks like they're going to do some more widening even. And they have turned what was, when I got here, a road that was seasonal, literally was closed six months a year. And it was a wilderness road. That was what I sort of bought into, to be honest. They have widened the road. Now it's become a shortcut for people to go from Sharon to Hartford. It does not provide any benefit really to Norwich residents, other than maybe the dozen houses at the farther end of the Hartford end that they can, without going through Hartford, come to Norwich. Unlike the way they used to have to do, which is go through Hartford. Not that it's any shorter, it's the same distance, which way, regardless which way you go, it's going to be the same 10 miles to get to downtown for them. But the point is, is that town, I don't know if this town planning can do anything about this, but the town is doing really stupid things with its roads when it's widening roads that were, were rural, very rural roads. And Tiger Town now has got seen increased speeds. And it is, like I said, it's primarily for people going in shortcuts that don't even, they don't even interact with the town of Norwich, other than to use, use Beaver Meadow and, and Mitchell Brook Road as a shortcut between Sharon and, and West Hartford. That's stupid. That's, that's, that doesn't make sense at all.
Jeff, you had a comment?
Uh, yeah, so some years ago, after writing a grant for the 10A corridor, which Norwich received funding for in concert with Ledger Bridge, the select board appointed a corridor committee and our committee was in place for golly, 15 years or so with a, proposing a bunch of traffic calming with public votes, public support, among other things from essentially Ledger Bridge, actually Hanover, all the way up to Turnpike Road, among other things. That study's available. I think, I think the notion of traffic calming and what, what it is as someone that's done hundreds of projects related to the traffic calming, et cetera, is, is a good topic. Again, to the extent there's a subcommittee, something like that. I think that would be great. I, I would like to urge caution. I appreciate the concerns of citizens and what's being posted on listserv. But I think this is in a very important topic that we should not be hasty about. I, I would defend Herb frankly, for trying to be circumspect about how he reviewed things that were presented and tried to, try to be practical. I, I assumed that Rod, his town manager, would do something like that. But it, it would be my, although I'd love to take this up, contemplate it. I would, I would not be hasty, but deliberative with respect to what we're going to implement over time.
Yeah. Any other comment on the role of the planning commission? Go ahead. Rod, go ahead.
So, so Vince, just to sort of give you a bit of a preview of tomorrow night, I guess. So a couple of weeks, well, maybe six weeks ago now, maybe a little less. They got authorization from the select board to purchase three radar signs, just like the ones that are like the one that you see when you come into town from, from the alleged bridge or the other one on Turnpike. Those three, we've currently got three or maybe four radar signs posted around town. There's one on Church Street near where Melissa lives and so forth. They're pretty old now and when it rains, the rubber seal on them leaks. And so they all turn off because they're electric. And then we need to go around and flip the breaker every time the rain stops and let the water out of the bottom of the box. So the idea here is that we've got three new ones coming. They'll bedazzlingly bright are, and they have multiple different functions, including recording the speed when they turned off, as well as recording the speed when they turned on. And so we can run little experiments, like leave them off, see what the speed of the passing traffic is. Turn the sign back on, see if it changes the driver's behavior, those kinds of things. They're designed to be mounted on poles, they're designed to be solar powered. And they feed the data to the cloud and we, they will end up subscribing to this service, which is probably where the real money is at. And we'll be able to download the data constantly and do an analysis. We may end up purchasing more of those. It was, you know, if they work out well and they, they work as advertised, I think we'll probably end up getting more. I'm in a sample size of two, me and the person in front of me. When I'm driving into town in the morning, when the sign's flashing, it tends to get some kind of a reaction. I mean, you know, I think it, usually it's a contractor's truck in front of me and they slow from 35 back down to, you know, 28. So there's some kind of a response there. And they sort of trickle through the village. What I'd say is that that's still, that's still just kind of, you know, just one aspect of it. I agree with you that road design, you know, the alignment, what's on the edge of the road, what kind of neighborhood it is, these are all really important factors. What the speed limit is set at is an important factor. Traffic safety engineers, when they analyze data like we've just received from the two, from the regional planning commission on the Beaver Meadow speed strips that we, you know, the, the data that we collected. speed strips that we, you know, the, the data that we collected, which was both traffic, total traffic count and speed. When 85% or, when 85% of the traffic is doing a particular speed, traffic engineers and, and, you know, with an interest in safety conclude that the average driver's behavior is responsive to the conditions in the environment. They're reading the risk and they're comfortable doing that speed, not that they're speeding maniacs and that 85% of people in your community are crazy, but that if 85% of people are doing that speed, then that's some kind of readout of how they interpret the conditions of, you know, it's their response to the environment. That's important information because it can signal a couple of different things. One could be enforcement, one could be just general community attitude that might need to be shifted or changed. It can also be, uh, an important point to sort of consider whether the current speed limit is appropriately set. And so even if you blanketed Beaver Meadow Road with police, it will be very difficult to get people to come down to their speed limit for the entire length of Beaver Meadow Road if you're, if you're observing 85% of the popular, of the driving population doing something else, right? So it sort of becomes not just a sort of a shallow exercise in, in resource allocation, but kind of an important question like, well, what are you trying to do? And, and how, and how much, how much are you willing to devote to changing people's behavior? So I think we've struggled, you know, the part of the, you know, the community has had this kind of dialogue, um, going on for a long time. There's a is a segment of the community that's very concerned about speeding traffic. That data suggests a couple of other things too. One is that 85% of the traveling public are comfortable doing 10 miles an hour over the speed limit, so somewhere between 35 and 38 miles an hour. But it really tapers off, like there were literally two cars in a two week period that went over 41 miles an hour. Right? So that's also a really important observation. So they're obviously still responding to something, like they're not you know, people have the technical ability to go a lot faster than that, but they're choosing not to go faster than that, right? So, and, and in a two week period, just having two vehicles, I think they were both heading into, into the village. There were, there were a few more going west, but going into the village, literally only two cars did more than I think 41 or 45 miles an hour, which is not to say that that's appropriate behavior, but it's actually a very interesting data point as well, that very few people were comfortable going over, you know, what is regularly sort of thought of as a suburban speed limit, which is 35 to 40 miles an hour, right? So there's lots of America that's, that's posted that way. And people learn how to drive in that environment and they're comfortable driving in that environment and that's how they behave. I don't have a problem trying to change it and I think if the community gets, gets, gets there and decides that they want to redo the alignment of, of not just Beaver Meadow, but other roads and incorporate bicycle and pedestrian facilities and change the lane width and change a whole lot of other, um, conditions, you know, to dramatically change the environment. Then if, as Jeff said, if those, if those things are contemplated carefully and thoughtfully and they don't result in giving people a false impression that they're safe doing something on the edge of a road where perhaps there isn't a risk associated with it. So to be blunt about it, one of the things that Vtrans is the state highway department does is say, no, we don't want to actually make it better for you to go easier or advertise that you should ride your bicycle on the edge of this state highway because we actually think it's dangerous for you to be on the edge of the state highway with people going past you at 55 miles an hour. So they won't, they won't improve the bicycle pedestrian conditions because they concluded that it would be increasing the harm to the people that would, you know, cyclists and pedestrians. So there's those kinds of things to weigh off and then there's other things to weigh off too, which is, I don't know how frequent it is. I, I think the total traffic count was interesting too. There's a lot of traffic that comes into Norwich in the morning from Sharon. You know, Beaver Meadow is actually a connecting road between two towns. So it takes a certain amount of traffic, you know, commuter traffic. And then I think some of that traffic is probably truck traffic, you know, delivering things to people's houses, you know, moving materials around. If you do change the, the road design, if you change the width of the lanes and so forth, as planners, then it's back to, it's back to the planning commission on some level to then think, well, and you know, realistically, how do you really want people to get from Sharon to Norwich? And then on to where they're going or vice versa, right? Like what are you really doing here? And so it's, it becomes kind of a complex, um, scenario, a little bit like that really dorky game that kids used to love called SimCity where you do, where you, where you make one change and then the game shows you what the consequences of that change are over time. Sort of sped up enormously. And all I can say there is that, you know, it will take time and contemplation on the part of the community. If we really do want to make a shift away from, if you like, privileging car use over other forms of use on the road network. Right now I'd say, like, most of them aren't. It's biased in favor of car drivers. And the question is, if you're going to change that bias, which I as a planner and as a person involved in transportation planning for a long time, don't have a problem with, but you, you know, you need to make those decisions informed, in, in a very informed and thoughtful way and probably still be prepared for unintended consequences. So that's, you know, and then in terms of strictly speaking, the planning commission's going to have opportunities, as, as Jeff pointed out, there'll be, there'll be venues, if you like, or, or moments when your expertise and your input's going to be really valued and, and, um, important. And then you can also initiate exercises through the regional planning commission who has a transportation planner, a very skilled transportation planner and a significant grant program through the state to do work on these questions. Ultimately, in terms of the way the structure works, it's a select board that sits as road commissioners and it's the decision that the select board's going to make about speed limits or changing lane widths or those kinds of things. So the planning commission can work in an advisory capacity, but not in a determinative capacity. I think it's the last part to really emphasize there, but I think that in my work with other communities, planning commissions have been really good at bringing to the select board the significance of these kinds of issues. So.
Thanks Rod. Did you have anything else before, Melvin? Think you're on mute.
Uh, no, yeah, I was just looking for some specific, like, like if there, if we can do anything, I, how could we, like, uh, just, I think you just answered that question. So that's really what, what we, what I'd like to know. Uh, I think Ernie has something to say.
Thanks Vince. Go ahead, Ernie. You're on mute. Yep.
Okay. I wanted to say that I appreciate Rod's pointing out that in fact, um, the planning commission does have something to say about this because I can see the tie in, for instance, in, in the Tiger Town Road area, where a lot of people are starting to walk. Uh, there's often hikers along the road, uh, Appalachian Trail hikers on the road. Interestingly enough, the road's also historic because it's part of the Underground Railroad and it was a part of Underground Railroad. So maybe, you know, we would be, I, I don't know how you balance these things. You know, in just to discourage the town from further widening it, for instance, to, you're making it more accessible to speeding and to just more traffic in general. You know, I mean, speed bumps are impractical, I think in dirt roads, um, or in a place like, uh, you know, thinking about children playing in roads and stuff like that, like on Kendall Station Road, we have a lot of animals and children in the roads and they're dead ends and there's no need for speeding anyways. It's only about a half a mile long road before it dead ends. You know, the, you know, maybe we should be thinking about that, the, the fact that, you know, these are, it, it is a semi-villag-y kind of place and therefore should have a low speed limit and, and so on. And this also of course does apply to the village itself and other places too. I remember, uh, we were trying to get a 25 mile an hour speed limit on Chapel Hill Road South, which is a very short road and is now closed off. But at one time, that road, people would be doing 40 miles an hour. It's a dirt road. There were tons of children, every, almost every house had, had children playing there and they're visiting each other and all that sort of stuff. And you could not get the people to slow down. On top of it all was a steep hill. So sometimes they just let the car roll. Uh, and they'd be doing 40 on, on a dirt road where they were kids. These are all sort of ways, you know, I mean, and the, and the road got widened over the years. That road became more, more passable, more car friendly. Finally, I think the bridge finally couldn't take it any longer and it, it kind of in, in inserted itself into the argument here now. So now it's a dead end, but maybe that's a bad planning too. We have dead end roads.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right, let's move on to, uh, item number eight. We have two minutes to approve. I think we ran out of people or something the last time.
Jack, you had one more to say about, about that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. I think at the beginning of the meeting, Jeff mentioned something about adding to an agenda. Was it about traffic?
Yes, I forgot about that. Yep, go ahead. Go ahead. Jeff, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, well, open meeting, uh, open meeting law and, uh, I don't mind deferring until our next agenda. It's, uh, I, I think, uh, it's really too late to cure it by, by law. But I would like to get this on an agenda and talk about what we just went through.
Yeah, what would, um, do you want to be more specific? Because I know this term is constantly being thrown around and as, you know, I think we should be really, you know, specific. What is the infraction that we're talking about here?
Well, uh, for me, I deal with open meeting law in all the time in multiple towns. So in this particular case, skipping over the procedural paradigm where Chair of the Select Board reaches out to Chair of the Planning Commission, which I think needs to be presented to the Planning Commission to take any action that relates to a decision by the commission, for lack of a better way to say it, without notifying the public, whether it's an email to everyone or an individual email, same email to separate people soliciting input, uh, is, it contravenes the open meeting law. And, and I basically stated that in the context of my response. And then Jackie, your response back to me is a further violation of open meeting laws. And I, I didn't respond to it because it would be a further violation. And I think Ernie was appropriate to say, he also violated the open meeting law, but it's not up to him to cure that. It's the commission's responsibility to cure that. So to me, there are a series of violations with respect to this one topic that might be informative to talk about in a, when we have enough time.
Right. All right. Well, I just, for the record, Jeff, because I know you, you've, um, described my behavior this way a couple of times now, but I just want to say, you know, with not thoughtless behavior by any means, you know, we had, we had, I just want to talk about my point of view. We had, we had talked and canceled the, uh, August meeting. The select board had what I thought was a very simple request about our agenda. It is within our, it is within the scope of an open meeting law to work on agendas and that's all that was being done. And I know, so anyway, I just want to say that, that's all.
So, so next, let's put it on a future agenda item and have a conversation about.
Sure, happy to do it. Happy to do it. That sounds great. We'll talk about open meeting law. So let's, um, do the the minutes now. We have the June 14th minutes that have been, that were in your package. We have a motion to approve the June 14th minutes. We have a question on the phone from Linda and then from, okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, no, I was trying to figure out why I was, uh, taken out of the meeting.
Uh, I don't know that you were taken out, but you certainly fell off. I noticed about, I don't know, it was five or 10 minutes ago, you and Jan just fell out of the meeting and I assumed it, it could have been, uh, some kind of a connection problem, which we want to have here. Um, that, that's the only explanation that I know.
I was trying to get back into the meeting.
Okay, all right. And I think, does someone have to notice that you're trying to get back in in order to get back in? I'm not sure how this works. Yeah, I think so.
Must be because you didn't catch me the first time, so I put it down and put it up a second time.
Yeah, that's probably what happened. Okay, okay. Sorry about that. Where are we? Okay, are we working on the minutes? Is that what we're doing? Sound right? Okay, see head's nodding. Okay, June 14th minutes. Um, Jeff, you had something to say before we go forward?
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve so we can have a discussion.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, Brian or Melissa, that's good. Okay, any discussion before we vote? Jeff, you have some discussion?
Yeah, so I, I had a number of changes. And, uh, I, I understand that, that the, the minutes in, in a way to my liking are, are less and less detailed. So I'm not necessarily objecting to lack of detail, but under, uh, item number one, I spoke on, under the public comment context. So says, uh, Goodrich moved and Lowe's second a motion to approve the agenda. Uh, Goodrich stated the agenda was too big to address. I, I put a period there. What I said, I thought subsequently was under the public, uh, public comments section, where Goodrich stated concerns about the commission's adherence to the VSA's, that the commission members are appointed by the select board, but otherwise do not answer to the select board. And that Rod has a conflict of interest as town manager because he serves the select board rather than the planning commission. So, um, I would like to see that added to the public comments section as opposed to a portion of it in the approved
Yeah.
agenda section. I also wanted to go on to, uh, the next section three. Goodrich suggested that a, a subcommittee, blah, blah, blah. I would have said, uh, Goodrich suggested that the, that the planning commission develop, propose, uh, regulation changes at a minimum uh, and at a minimum form a subcommittee to develop new regulations. I, I know there's some redundancy there, but, uh, uh, I was trying to weave and then I, I think it's accurate where it says Horace responded with concerns about that. I want to note that I responded, that I disagreed, uh, with Melissa's perspective and again noted the affordable housing subcommittee as the basis for my, uh, my comment. And then finally, uh, under item four, I think it's important, I, I'm shown as against, uh, but the discussion included my objections based on process that would be helpful for me to be in the minutes.
Do we, okay, just one point of clarification. Do we, okay. Do we generally note why people vote for or against something? That seems new to me. I, I don't think we generally do that. Okay.
I, I think we often do that, but I think, uh, the issue for me is more the process question that I posed that I'd like to see in the minutes.
Oh, just a note there that you objected to the process or something?
Yes.
Okay, got it. All right, let's give, hey, good, we have a new member. It's good to see you. Do you have your costume on? What are you wearing? That's what I want to know. Your favorite dress? Oh, oh, your favorite pajamas. Okay. Even better. That's wonderful. All right, Rod, we had a couple of corrections there. I know you're busily writing. Are you, uh, okay with all that?
I will re-watch the tape, I guess.
Go ahead, Ernie.
Yeah, um, just, uh, it's in section, uh, set, uh, six. There's a line that says Chickatelli suggested that the planning commission do a housing study. And then, and, and the problem is, is the next sentence is incomplete or something because it says Alan noted that the housing chapter of the 2020 town plan and housing strategy, and that's where the sentence ends.
Are you on the June 14th minutes?
Yes. Uh, no, what are these ones?
Okay.
July 12th. I'm sorry, maybe I jumped the gun.
I think it's just noted the, instead of noting that the, the comment
Okay.
is that such a study already existed in the form of the town plan and the housing.
Okay, but I was on the wrong, I was, sorry, I jumped the gun. I was just getting to the easiest one to grab.
Brian, you had something?
Oh, did it? Yeah, did it? Did you not just hear what I said?
No, I'm sorry. What did you say?
Oh, sorry. Ernie's comment, we just need the word "that" removed and then it becomes clear. The point of that comment was that no such, no, no study was necessary because such a study already existed in the form of the town plan and the housing strategy. So noted the, instead of noting that, uh, does that make sense, Ernie?
Yeah, once again, is this on the, this is on the, the June, July 12th minutes you're talking about?
It, it makes sense to me insofar as I haven't looked to see if it really addresses the issue that I was talking about, but in terms of the correctness of the sentence, yes, that makes, that will, that, that makes sense, sense there. But in terms of the correctness of the sentence, yes, that makes that well, that that makes sense, sense there.
Can we finish with June fourteen?
Yeah, let's finish with June fourteenth first. Okay, all right. So how does the group want to proceed here? How does the group want to proceed with these minutes? There's a time factor here. I would like to figure out if there's a way that we could come up with, you know, some changes and be done with this. It's not a value add here to obsess over this. And so
What's wrong with Rod doing what he said relative to listening to the tape and
Does that seem like a good use of his time to you, Jeff? Does that seem like a good use of his time? You would think of the good use of your time?
If I'm the clerk, then it's a wonderful, fabulous use of my time.
Anybody have any other ideas there?
Jeff, I'm sorry, Ernie's hand is up and so is Linda's.
No, no.
I think it's up from before. Yeah, and I think Linda might be up from before, from when she was trying to get in the meeting. Go ahead, Brian.
Sure. Jeff, I have no objection to including your recollection in the minutes. And if 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 you want to send a quick sentence or two addition
Yeah.
that that comports with your comments, I would happily approve the the minutes as amended tonight. I I find them to be uncontroversial, given the 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 material in previous meetings. So I don't feel the need to go down that that additional path, but it's up to you.
I've already read them into the record, Brian, and they're they're available. I can re, since I've written them down in presenting them in a deliberative paradigm, it should be fairly easy to grab them and I trust Rod to grab them as as a part of our approval.
That's great. Then I I make a motion to approve these minutes.
They'll approve them on that basis.
Yeah, as amended by Jeff's comments.
Okay, got it.
A second.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, going to July fourteenth, you had a suggestion on how to fix number six so that it made more sense.
Yeah, just
Okay, Rod, were you able to get that, Rod? Okay, any other changes? So do we have a motion? We didn't even make a motion for this because we started talking about it backwards. But do we have a motion to approve the July fourteenth minute?
So moved.
And we have a second. Okay, thank you, Vince. And then any discussion beyond what we just discussed? Yep, Brian?
Sorry, it's the July twelfth.
All in favor?
No, 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 no. It's it's not July fourteenth minutes if you're recording the the motion.
July twelfth minutes. It was June fourteenth, thank you. Okay, all in favor of the July fourteenth minutes, raise your hand. Yay, all right, any opposed?
No, it's July twelve, it's July twelve.
Oh, my God, I did it again.
You did it again.
Getting late, I'm sorry.
So it's July twelve.
Thank you, July twelfth minutes, apologies, folks. I've had it. You've obviously had it, all right.
I abstain, I wasn't there.
Okay. Jeff abstained for the July twelfth minutes, Scott. Everyone else voted in favor. All right, so any other business? I think we've exhausted ourselves. I know I have. Uh, what about the future meeting schedule and agendas? We, our next meeting is on October eleventh, after that, November eighth. And we will the density study is the one topic I have, open meeting law discussion. Is there anything else that we have on the agenda for our October eleventh meeting? Yeah, Brian?
I don't know if this gives them enough time, but if it's reasonable to get some kind of sense of Rod and Aaron's capacity, it would it would just be great to hear what their their ability to assist with our various work streams is for the end of the year. If if they're able to put together a presentation or at least just a discussion.
Yeah, we've got our work plan as always in the package. And I think to your point, Brian, it would be, let's do a dive on this and maybe update it. Rod and Aaron together and maybe get some more detail behind it so we can think through maybe our next three meetings. You know, what it is, it, what is it, you know, that we want to dive into and accomplish? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that would really help. Now we could have, yeah, just plan out more than more take home work than just meeting to meeting assignment. I think that would help.
I agree. That's good. And then also, let's keep wastewater study on the radar. If that's going to get done by the spring, we need to get, keep that on the radar. Okay. Okay, anything else that we didn't talk about that we should have? Yeah, Ernie?
Just just if you would read off, read off the list again, that's all. Yeah, please.
Yeah, sure. I've got the density study, should be the conclusion, we hope by then. Uh, update on the wastewater study, open meeting law and then which I guess could be, you know, whatever, little training again, however we want to deal with that. And then the a detailed study, discussion, I should say, of our work plan uh, with Aaron and Rod, what could we expect to be focusing on and getting done over the next three plus months? Okay. All right, great. All right, any public comment, Nancy or Linda? Hearing none, seeing none. Then Aaron, we look forward to working with you. Glad you could attend tonight. Thank you very much. And we have a motion to adjourn. Yep, thanks, Melissa. We have a second. Second, and before we vote, Linda, you just popped up again. Is there something you wanted to say?
Oh, no, I didn't realize it went back up again.
It's probably the rain. I don't know, you know, my phone in Providence never worked in the rain. Anyway, all in favor of a journey? Yeah, we, I see unanimous agreement and have a good night, folks. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, bye bye.